Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission Meeting of April 28, 2025. For viewers watching at home, some members of the public may be participating via video conference or teleconference. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Again, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic of which we stand, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and freedom.
Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Busse?
Here.
Commissioner Lanson?
Here.
Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Vice Chair Kettlehut?
Here.
Chair Ferris.
Here. Tonight, we have with us Deputy Community Development Director Fabiola Zalaya-Meliker. Is there any written comments, announcements, or continuances at this time?
We have none at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Now's the time for public comment. At this time, any person may address the commission regarding a city planning matter that is not on the city's agenda. Should the commission wish to discuss an issue raised by a member of the public, the issue will be referred to for staff for scheduling of a future agenda. Anyone who would like to speak under public comments must fill out a speaker card in chambers or click Request to Speak on the Agenda to receive instructions before the public comments. A portion of the agenda is called. The speakers' remarks should be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to an individual commissioner or staff member unless otherwise provided by the commission. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Screen will show you the remaining time we have. Do we have any public comments?
No.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the consent calendar for the minutes of April 7, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. Consent calendar will be approved in one motion unless the commissioner wishes to pull an item for discussion or separate motion. Any of our fellow commissioners have any comments or motion to approve the consent calendar? Commissioner McMahon?
I move that we approve the consent calendar and including the minutes of Planning Commission Meeting, April 7.
Perfect. Thank you. We call the roll.
Commissioner Busse? Commissioner Lanson?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Yes.
Chair Ferris?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0. Commissioner Busse abstaining.
Thank you. We have no public hearings tonight, so we will move to item 8A on the Planning Commission Agenda, 2024 General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Report, presenting on behalf of staff as Senior Planner in Holt.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, so before you tonight, you have the 2024 General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Report. Basically, it's an informational item covering the actions of implementation for both the general plan and housing element for the calendar year of 2024. So as a bit of background, cities must provide annual progress reports for implementation of general plans and their housing elements. The general plan implementation report, in conjunction with the housing element annual report, is submitted to the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation, or LCI, and the requisite filing of an annual progress report for the housing element is submitted to Department of Housing and Community Development, and that is required for ongoing certification for the housing element. Submission of the report basically maintains our eligibility for certification as well as state grant and funding applications, and the report before you tonight has been submitted to HCD and LCI on March 31, 2025. So first off, the general plan APR, since the adoption of the general plan in December of 2023, shortly thereafter in the first quarter, on March 26, 2024, the City Council adopted a resolution approving a general plan amendment and the zone change for concurrent actions related to a density transfer from 400 East Rolling Oaks Drive to 355 West Janes Road, concurrent with entitlements for a comprehensive cancer care center at 400 East Rolling Oaks. The land use designation changes associated with that project consisted of a change of 4.74 acre site from Neighborhood Very Low to Commercial Neighborhood, and then a change of a 2.145 acre site at 355 Janes Road from Institutional to Neighborhood Low 1. Consistent with the no net loss provisions of the Housing Crisis Act, also known as SB 330, concurrent land use changes were necessary to ensure that there was no net loss in residential capacity since the adoption of the general plan and the housing element. In terms of the adopted general plan, the attachment before you has a complete list of all the implementation actions that were occurring on the short term. The implementation chapter outlines actions in the short-term basis of 1 to 3 years, medium, 4 to 7 years, and long-term actions which are beyond 7 years. The actions summarized before you tonight are, for the most part, short-term ones since we're in the first full year of reporting for the general plan. And some of those highlighted ones, first and foremost, was the completion of LU A2. This was the creation of the new mixed-use zoning district as well as the changes to the zoning map that was necessary to get certification for our housing element. That was the required rezoning to basically activate the housing sites inventory so that there was consistency between zoning and land use for those areas identified for housing in the housing element. And also, there's ongoing progress regarding the comprehensive zoning code update. The city has enlisted the services of Lisa Weiss Consulting, and we're ongoing our first assessment and analysis with the consultants on the zoning code update, and that was ongoing. It's anticipated to continue into 2026 around midsummer as far as the planned adoption date for that. Third, actually, prior to the general plan adoption, we did update the inclusionary housing program. Again, that was the requirement to build or pay an in-lief fee for affordable housing on qualifying projects, whether they be apartments or for sale projects. Then on May 7 of 2024, the City Council adopted the Climate and Environmental Action Plan. And then also, another highlight was the overhaul of the city's website, which was launched in September 2024. And the fully revised website features accessibility tool user way that makes the website easier to navigate for users of all abilities, and this improved platform is ADA compliant, also significantly reduced the content to keep relevant and current items more focused and easier to find, such as emergency notification features and work seamlessly with mobile devices as well. And then last, another highlight is the progress and the initiation of the Downtown Thousand Oaks Project, but referred to as the Campus Master Plan and the General Plan. This, we have design and financial services on contract for developing that down to our core plan, and one workshop has occurred already in relation to that. Moving on to the Housing Element Annual Progress Report, this is, again, the first full year for reporting this cycle. Well, actually, I take that back. It's the second full year, but since the actual final adoption of the housing element. But the annual progress reports includes a summary of the proposed and entitled residential units. That means those that have been approved by the Planning Commission or by staff. Also, a summary of building permit issuance associated with residential units, where we are in tracking in terms of our regional housing needs allocation. Also, a summary of the housing programs implementation, and then a report on the Housing Successor Agency Annual Report. So this first slide, for the year of 2024, residential application activity is focused on those projects that were actually submitted within the year of 2024 and also approved within the year 2024. So it does not capture all units that were approved. However, we had a total of 108 units submitted under applications. Yeah, 108 applications totaling 109 units. Out of those 109 units, 107 were approved, and then two were disapproved. In terms of the entitlements approved, and those are all the projects that received planning entitlement approval, we approved 520 units total. Most of those were attributed to the Hillcrest-Erbs 78 Affordable Town Homes project. That's a city project with 59 low-income units and 19 moderate-income units, and then the 500 Thousand Oaks Boulevard with 328 units consisting of 44 low-income and 284 above-moderate income units. The majority of the remaining units were all accessory dwelling units at 104 units. So in terms of reporting for our meeting arena, it's the building permits issuance that gets counted. So for 2024, ADUs made up the majority of the building permits issued for 2024. However, building permits issued are not representative of the recent development entitlements approved by the City Council. Currently, there's over 1,900 units, including over 280 affordable units that have been approved in the last couple of years, and there remains five more reporting years as part of the housing element cycle. Many of these units are associated with large projects that have been affected by circumstances beyond the city's control, such as the current economic environment and the need for interest rates to come down. Staff continues to work with the developers to ensure completion of the projects and are confident that affordable units will be pulled building permits in the future. So here is basically our track record for the regional housing needs allocation summary. And just as a reminder, the city has already satisfied meeting their arena allocation because it is a planning measurement tool, not a construction measurement tool. So though we have 2,621 units assigned to us for this housing element cycle, we've basically obligated, we've fulfilled that obligation by actually demonstrating through our sites inventory that we have sites available that can accommodate that number. Moving on to the housing program implementation highlights, as mentioned before, Programs 1 and 2. 1 was associated with the rezoning program necessary for the sites inventory. That was the mixed-use zoning code as well as the rezoning map. And then also, Program 2 also included a by right approval per AB 1397, and that is essentially a ministerial approval for projects that meet a certain eligibility in terms of affordability. Also, during 2024, there was updates to the ADU regulations consistent with state law at that time. However, there is always updates ongoing regarding ADUs as the laws keep getting adopted and amending it further. Programs 4 and 6 were also approved. That's the code amendment for ministerial process for lot consolidation. So hearings are no longer required for merging lots, especially for housing projects. And if the housing project provides affordable housing, there are certain incentives included with a lot merger, as well as we codified the SB 35, which, similar to AB 1397, is a ministerial process for qualifying affordable housing projects. SB 35, just as a reminder, in our jurisdiction, would require a 50% affordability component as part of a project. And then in terms of Project 7, Program 7, basically, we've continued our partnership with People Self-Help for the 78-unit of affordable housing townhome project at Hillcrest and Erbs. And then the last, the next list of Program 8 was a variety of zoning code amendments required for changes to housing and land use mandates were required to be done. Those related to manufactured homes, density bonus provisions consistent with state law, clarification on emergency and transitional housing definitions, also objective operational standards for low-barrier navigation centers, defining supportive housing, and also introducing farmworker-employee housing as an allowed use in any area that's allowed residential uses. And then also clarifying licensed residential care facilities, emergency shelters. Programs 12 and 13 are a direct result of applying our community development block grant funds to rehabilitation of 28 mobile home units occupied by low-income seniors, as well as rehab of 72 affordable rental units in the Bella Vista Apartments. And then last, as part of Program 18, which is our neighborhood improvement programs, the city's Public Works Department has conducted a variety of projects in low-resource census tract areas as well as sensitive community areas. Those basically consist of the Hillcrest Drive bike lane and pedestrian improvements, Thousand Oaks Boulevard curb cuts, and other pedestrian crossing projects that were completed, as well as wastewater pipe maintenance activities. And then funding was also authorized for the Lynn Road bike lanes. So with that, the recommendation is just to receive and file the 2024 General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Report and find that this action is not a project as defined under the California Environmental Quality Act. And that would conclude my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Great overview. Are there any questions or comments of staff, commissioners? Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Chair. Looking at one of the last paragraphs, by the way, thank you, Mr. Holt, for your report. Looking at one of the last paragraphs, it talks about how there's approximately 1,963 residential units for which entitlements have been granted, and then 347 permits, though, have been issued. So I'm looking at that difference is basically what's been authorized, but not yet any building permits. I know typically with regard to applications, there's a finite period of time in which they're to get started, say three years or whatever. I'm assuming they don't need to come back before us for an extension, but what do they have to do to get that extension? I'm just curious.
So in the code, a typical entitlement is given a three-year period as far as their approval date. Also, subsequent to that, you're allowed up to two time extensions, a totaling of another 48 months on top of that. So seven years could be the lifespan, but prior to the expiration of that seven years, if they got the two time extensions, you would have to pull building permits and diligently pursue construction. But for the most part, pulling the building permits, recording a map, and so forth. Now, some of those projects also have development agreements, so they have also their own terms in terms of the actual timeframe that they have to implement them since they are much larger projects. But the typical timeframe for your entitlements is seven years total, given the time extensions.
And just because of all of the things that we've gone through as part of the plan amendment and what Sacramento has kind of required us to look at, are there any of the projects that have already been approved that, as going through that extension process, have to somehow come back before us or the City Council for any kind of reapplication process or new things they have to satisfy, or are they all grandfathered into what happened when we initially approved them?
No, they don't automatically grandfather in if they met their full expiration. I mean, essentially, it would need to be a new application. But if, you know, with the general plan and the zoning in place, and if those projects are consistent with that, then, you know, it would just essentially be entertaining a new application probably for a similar project, but then...
But would it have to comply with the terms of the plan that was in effect at the time it was approved, or would they have to come forward now with the new plan?
They would have to come forward with a new plan.
Okay. Does that create any potential additional problems with regard to then that development?
Actually, let me take that back because several of those large projects, they do have a legislative act associated with them. So they do have a specific plan. So that specific plan is very much catered to the specific development that was entitled as well. So those, the specific plan rides with the land, just like zoning does. So the terms of that specific plan basically, even if the specific plan doesn't expire, so then the entitlements, yes, would still have to go through the motions, but for the most part, would just have to remain consistent with the specific plan at that.
I'm just trying to make sure all the time effort that you all spent and that we all spent is still there and it's going to go towards something without having to basically restart the whole process.
And Chair, let me, if I can, to Commissioner Lanson's question. As Mr. Holt mentioned, there are a number of these projects that have development agreements in them. And I will tell you that obviously with the economy as it is, it's been a challenge with a number of these projects with getting them started. We have been working with a number of the developers in doing minor amendments to some of these documents. Other ones that require what we call major amendments, as described in the development agreement, require council action to review again. You might see some of those happening in the near future just because of the circumstances. As Mr. Holt said, our agreements used to be kind of a standard of five years, and we would expect them to either submit plans and specifications within one year or sometimes two years. And the last few that we've done, we've extended it to seven years just because we knew the economy was very challenging at the time. And sure enough, we have seen a number of requests to modify various aspects of the agreement. One of these has changed hands recently. The 500 Thousand Oaks Boulevard, which was a cherry tree project, has now been purchased by, and now the property is owned by a subsidiary of Trammell Crow. So that's been a recent development, yet they are still moving forward with that project, but just at a pace that is not, you know, they're not breaking ground right now. We have another, a number of projects that you've heard about, you had before you. They're all in just a variety of positions as to how far they've advanced, but they have been definitely reaching out to the city for trying to come up with modifications that they can be permitted to do. One of those, which is now a state law, by the way, we were kind of ahead of the game with that, is requiring that the payment of the fees. So once you get a building permit, you are required to pay all the fees, for example, the school fees or the building fees, traffic impact fees, things of that nature. And now that's changing for the most part to you have to pay that at the time of you're going to be issued their certificate of occupancy. So that's one factor. It all goes to the economy, right? It all goes to the finances that are involved, trying to help developers get through a stage where they can start building, not having to pay some of these other fees. And of course, the state says, well, we'll let the city kind of eat the fees for now because also we used to, if we do that kind of agreement, we also require them to pay interest. We cannot do that anymore based on state law. So that's just another example of how the state recognizes that there's been a challenge with the economy, and therefore, many of these entitlements are just not, they're kind of stalled a little bit. Again, I would say for the city, we've been fortunate that we have the communication. City Manager's Office and CDD have been very busy with their effort to work with the developers in helping them try to figure out how you can get these things moving. But they all have their own challenges. And I will say frankly, for a couple of them, we really have not heard from the developer. There's a time period for them to start to present the documents to the city for review, such as the plans and specs. That, those dates have not hit yet, so they're really kind of next year, but we're keeping an eye on those as well.
I tend to ask my first question to the developer if they're actually going to build it, and I've gotten a lot of people that come up and said, you were focusing on that, and where are these things? And again, obviously, the answer is it's complicated. And also, just a personal thing, I'm glad to hear that our city is doing so much to stay upfront and keep involved with regard to their state requirements. As I read about other cities going through various other problems, I just know we have a great staff that makes sure that we're ahead of the game. So thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions of staff? I'm going to ask if we have any public comments.
No.
Okay. We'll go back to our commission to see if they want to have any last-minute comments or questions. If not, I'll entertain discussion or motion. Vice Chair.
Happy to make the motion. I move that we find that this action is not a project as defined under the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA pursuant to Section 15378B, and receive and file the 2024 General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Report.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? If not, let's have a vote.
Commissioner Busse?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanson?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Yes.
Chair Ferris?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right. Thank you. And thank you very much for the report and the discussion today. Now's the time for commission comments and/or any AB 1234 reports. Are there any comments from fellow commissioners? If not, we'll go to staff update. Ms. Zalaya-Meliker, are there any follow-up items, announcements, or upcoming issues?
Thank you, Chair. On April 29, there will be a public hearing on Community Development Block Grant, CDVG Housing and Urban Development, documents for the draft 2025-2029 Ventura County Regional Consolidated Plan, the draft 2025-2026 Annual Action Plan, and the draft Consolidated Plan, the draft 2025-2026 Annual Action Plan, and the draft 2025 Ventura County Analysis of Impediment to, for housing choice, and draft Citizen Participation Plan. There will also be two consent calendar items. The first one will be appointment of a Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy member and transfer of city-owned open space property to COSCA for long-term ownership and management for Assistant Personal Number 6630093225. Moving to upcoming Planning Commission items, there will be an upcoming Planning Commission item on May 12, and that will be for a monument sign at the collection at Janes, at the southeast corner of Moore Park and Janes Road. Tentatively also scheduled is the 50 industrial buildings at the intersection of Conejo Center Drive and Rancho Conejo Boulevard. And on May 19, there will be a public hearing on a municipal code amendment. We are updating our SB 9 ordinance to comply with some of the recent changes in state law. And also, there will be policies and procedures for conducting public hearings for mobile home rent adjustments and just and reasonable, reasonable return applications, and that's what's coming up. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, and thank everybody. We'll now adjourn to the next meeting on May 12, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.